We are recording.
Okay, thank you. This begins continuation of the open session of our meeting. I will read the the script for those who weren't here for the five o'clock beginning of this meeting, the 5:15 rather. Good evening and welcome to the February ninth meeting of the Needham Select Board. I am Mo Handel, Board Chair. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded at anything shared or stated will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available at the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will not include public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present at this portion of our meeting. Marian Cooley?
Here.
Matt Borelli?
Here.
John Bullion?
Here.
Dan Matthews?
Here.
Thank you. As a first order of business, I will ask for a motion that this meeting will be continued to the board's next meeting of Tuesday, February 23rd, should a technical problem develop. Is there such a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Then seconded, come to the vote. Marian?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the very first item on our agenda, and I'd like to welcome Timothy McDonald, Director of Health and Human Services, and Tiffany Zeig, Assistant Director of Public Health, to bring us an update on COVID. And let me start before they begin by complimenting them and the Health Department staff for the incredibly efficient, well-attended session, two sessions this weekend. And I'll let them update you with respect to how many shots they were able to deliver for folks not just in Needham, but from all around this general area, far away as beyond Worcester. So Timothy?
Thanks very much, Mo.
Tiffany, the floor is yours, and thank you again for all your hard work.
Well, thank you for having us. Tiffany and I are gonna give a brief presentation, and then certainly we'd love to take questions from the Select Board. Cindy, I'm gonna share my screen and so I'll start with, I think, the bad news and let Tiffany give the good news because she gets to talk about the vaccines, which we were very happy about, and we really feel was a great success. This is the state criteria for risk. This was developed and rolled out in early November. It's the criteria that the state is still currently using to assess risk. Needham generally looks at a number of communities and the counties of Millsex, Norfolk, and Suffolk to understand the risk both to the community itself and to the surrounding area. As you can see, Needham is in the yellow category, which is moderate risk level. Our average daily incident rate is down. This is the third consecutive week it's been down. Positive testing rate is down, and that is the third consecutive week it's down. So the middle of January was a very tough stretch. That was the highest we had been. We went over 50 for average daily cases, and we would we would like to see it much lower than this, but we're a lot more comfortable in the 30s than we were in the 50s. I find it somewhat helpful since I'm a visual person to sort of see the progression over time of the state risk map. This is based on data from the Boston Globe. But you can see, and this is starting back in the beginning of November, when the state first unveiled these new criteria that you can see progressively the risk level, the Commonwealth, at least the eastern part of the Commonwealth, increasing quite dramatically from green to yellow and yellow to red. From our perspective, this was sort of the peak, the seventh and the fourteenth were sort of the peak of risk. And we've been getting a little bit reduced risk every week, leading us up to where we are now, which is that that's data through the end of January and this week the release data. So that's the latest data we have. I do want to go over with the Select Board, the fact that we have cases over a two-week period that are are down. You can see, and I think this is somewhat helpful to consider, that the cases in different age brackets, and you can see a very sharp number, a very high number, rather, in the five to 18 age bracket. What's important to remember is this is the time period, January 17th to the 30th, where we had a spike of cases, a cluster of cases that closed Needham High School for, actually for Friday and then a whole week. So it's not surprising to see that that's the highest, that age group is the highest sort of number of cases for that period. We did break it down a little bit further, and again, this isn't really surprising data. I think it reinforces what we understood, but because there was a cluster of more than 30 cases at the high school, the number of cases in the five to 18 age bracket was very high, much higher than our middle school and elementary school numbers. We do like to look at the cases in young adults. And this was a group that sort of spiked in November around Thanksgiving and a little bit after Thanksgiving. It's still a group where there's significant transmission, but it's not our sort of main focus now. You can see age breakdown on this slide, year-to-date. You can see the total number of cases on the sort of Y-axis here. You can see us growing from a fairly modest volume in September. Along with the rest of the state, the volume has gone up. You can see the banding is associated with colors. This is some data, and we've been very fortunate in Needham to have a grant from the Midwest Health Foundation that pays for very talented part-time epidemiologist named Hannah Whitehead. She's on part of Tiffany's team that looked at sort of the share of disease burden by the share of the population. So if everything was equal, we would expect that the percentage of cases would equal the percentage of the population. And you can see, again, not surprising, for this two-week period where there was a cluster at Needham High School, the cases in the five to 19 age bracket, and it's important to note, we, for this slide, we used data from the census. So we didn't use the state five to 18 bracket, we used five to 19, which was the census age bracket. But you can see that there's a higher share of disease burden in this, in this age bracket. If we, sorry, if we had, if we looked at a longer period of time, we'll smooth this out. It won't be as sharp in the five to 18 category. But when you're looking at the two-week period where there's a cluster in the high school, it's not surprising that the disease burden falls heavily, heaviest in that category. Again, and you can see, this is broken down a little bit further to elementary, middle, high school, and then post-high school, early college. You can see the vast majority of cases in that five to 19 bracket, much more, much higher rate than we would expect, given their share of the population. You can see on this chart, and it's a little bit busy, but it's tracking since early August, the average daily case volume per 100,000. Needham is in, is the blue line, and generally where the second lowest in most of these charts, you can see pretty much everybody's coming down with the exception of Dedham, which unfortunately has had a spike over the past two weeks and has gone to a very high level. And this is just to zoom in on the last six weeks in that bracket. So you can see Needham and other communities coming down, Dedham unfortunately spiking. The overall incident rate you can see within the age bracket is just another way to sort of slice the data, and we think it's sort of helpful to think about what our overall rate is, which is, in this instance, is 37.4 for this time period. And you can see that there are two groups that are above that incident rate. And, you know, in a, in a good sign, adults and older adults and seniors have an incident rate well below what our town average is. And that's a good thing, obviously, because folks in that age bracket are the most vulnerable generally to have serious negative health outcomes if they do contract COVID. And you can, this is the other end of that spectrum. Looking at counties, you can see sort of what I think the, the chart, the maps that we showed earlier show, which is the, the risk level in the Commonwealth as a whole, which is the blue and the three nearby counties, was going up for quite a long time. It spiked in mid-January and it's been coming down ever since. Same thing with the positive testing rate. Now, I think we'll jump maybe to the positive news. Sorry, a little bit more in the positive testing rate, and you can see downward trend. Tiffany, do you want to talk a little bit about the COVID vaccinations?
So we started our COVID vaccinations, as everyone knows, in January with our first responders. And we've kind of gone from there since. We did, so far to date, first doses of 1,628, which is awesome, and much largely due to our clinics we had over the weekend. Over the weekend alone, we did 1,166 doses to residents and people at large within Massachusetts, Massachusetts, which is awesome. In, in that realm, we have received the Pfizer vaccine, which comes in pockets of 975 doses, according to the state, but in the average, most people are able to pull six doses out of it instead of a five-dose phial, as it's normally labeled. So we were able to, and we banked on being able to do about 1,170 doses. Weren't quite able to get the full amount out of a couple, but we came very close. So we were quite excited about that. We utilized multiple, multiple people throughout the weekend and multiple, multiple town departments to help us pull this off. And we are very grateful for, to everybody, especially our volunteers and our MRC Corps and our staff that picked up and helped us out throughout the weekend. To DPW, to building maintenance, to police, to fire, to everybody that made this happen. So we were able to hold a really well-appreciated clinic that we have received a lot of positive praise for, which is awesome. And we were able to do over 80% were between the ages of 75 and older. So that also was great. And it was good to be able to help that population in a smaller town field, but at a larger scale at the same time, because they felt at home a little bit, I feel, and felt taken care of. And so that was awesome. The way we set it up, it was at CAS. We did, we had seven vaccinators at a time, and then they would come through their, through the line, they get vaccinated, and then they go off and sit in their socially distant section. And then somebody would come around and help them register for their second dose. So we also got everybody registered at the time of the clinic for their second dose, which was great as well. I'm not sure what else slides you've got on here, Tim, if you have anymore.
Tiff, I wanted to also see if you would highlight our Medical Reserve Corps, because we, we did rely on volunteers from town departments, but we also relied heavily on our Medical Reserve Corps.
Yeah, so when we started our Medical Reserve Corps, well, when COVID started, our Medical Reserve Corps was about 25 people. It has since grown to about 120 as of today. And a good, large chunk of that, probably 80 to 90 of that have been in the last month. So we have been doing some trainings, holding some trainings. We started in December, and then one kind of update last week with them. We trained multiple people on giving vaccines. Not only do we have retired nurses and doctors giving vaccines, we also had an EMT and a couple of emergency medical use providers able to help us give vaccines over the weekend. We also have trained multiple non-medical volunteers, and they have helped us in many different ways, parking, traffic flow, traffic patterns, registration, greeters. We even had a piano player on Saturday, like we've just had an outpouring and outreach of volunteer work, which is amazing, and we are so very grateful for that. And working together as a team, even with groups of people that don't work together at all in any other realm, worked out very, very well for us, and we are very grateful. From the clinics alone, we've probably had about 20 people reach out saying, I saw what you did. I'd love to be a part of this. Can you please find out how we can help you and volunteer for you? So we're continuing to see an outpour and outreach, and we are very grateful for that.
One of the challenges with this population, and so the populations that were eligible for vaccination were anyone from, from phase one, which included healthcare workers, first responders, and non-COVID-facing healthcare workers, as well as the first group, the first priority group within phase two, which is individual 75-plus. As Tiffany said, most of the people that came were in that 75-plus category. We did have some non-COVID-facing healthcare workers that did register as well. One of the big challenges was registering folks for a second clinic. It, it's a time-consuming process. It's a fairly non-smart process. Across the state webpage, you have to enter the address and date of birth of the person three or four different times. And it was resource-intensive. I think one of the things that we learned, I think, from Saturday, we tried to make improvements between Saturday and Sunday, was a better flow and a better sort of spread out of volunteers and more volunteers to help with the registration. Most of those people didn't actually register themselves, or many of those people didn't actually register themselves. For example, staff from Needham's Aging Services Division made calls to individuals, especially individuals that they knew didn't have a computer at home, or maybe didn't have internet, internet access, or were otherwise sort of hard to reach. And they signed them up over the phone for our clinics. So that was a sustained outreach campaign. I think there were 120 or thereabouts, Tiffany, Needham seniors that we specifically reached out to in a way from the Aging Services Division.
So they actually lastly called 300 people, and they were able to sign up 120. Several of them had also already registered somewhere else by the time they had outreach to them, but they just called about 300 people.
One thing I would like to just share one more screen with the board, if I could. And this is something that I think we've gotten some questions about, but I think Tiffany and I are both fairly proud of. These are the first doses administered through the end of Sunday. You can see sort of the total number of individuals from those communities, and so I think it's important to distinguish here, these are the place of residence of the person who was vaccinated. We know, for example, that our fire chief is one of the people that's in that 855, because he lives in Holliston. We know that our police chief, for example, is one of the people in that 29, because he lives in Walpole. So it's misleading to say there were only 364 sort of people in Needham that got vaccinated, but we're, we're very happy about this. Other communities have made the decision to limit their vaccination clinics to only their community. I think, you know, Tiffany and I both feel very fortunate that the town has provided the Public Health Division and, and other departments with a lot of resources to try to help serve the population. And we wanted to make COVID vaccinations available as broadly as possible as a matter of promoting equity. I think it also is enlightened self-interest. The communities that have had restricted clinics, clinics that are just restricted to their community have gotten generally 100 doses a week, or in some cases, zero doses a week. Needham, partially because we got an ultra-cold freezer, so we can accept Pfizer vaccine, but, but partially because we said we would not be residency-restricted, we would be open to anyone. We've received a very significant volume of vaccine. And so it's true that not 100% of the people vaccinated in our Needham clinics are from Needham. But it's also true that getting about 20-something percent of more than 1,000 doses is a lot better than getting 100% of 100 doses. So I think we're gratified that we're doing, I think, what is something to promote regional access and regional equity, but something that also directly benefits Needham and its residents.
Mo, you're mute.
Thank you very much, Marian.
Tim, I just want to say thank you. I mean, getting the ultra-cold refrigerator clearly was the, actually, the first step was, I think, hiring all the staff and then getting the ultra-cold refrigerator. But it's very clear to me that getting access to that 1,000 doses a week is clearly beneficial to our population as a whole. So I'm really grateful for all the planning work that you and your staff have done so that we have this access in such a wonderful, convenient place for Needham citizens that doesn't require going to Gillette or Fenway or, or one of the bigger, further-away locations. So thank you for all the work. It's a great thing. I was a little bit curious as I was watching the, the slides and the numbers go by. Do, do you know if they're doing any of the gene typing in the Dedham Spike? Are we starting to see any typing coming back of the various strains? Because I am curious to see when we see the UK version start to appear.
I think that's a good question. I don't have a great answer to it. I know that the state has already done a press release or two saying that the variants are here in the community and in at least limited volume, but I don't know when they will become sort of the dominant strain. It's anticipated that they will, at least based on some projections, within six weeks or so. Certainly, that, that is a concern for us, but, but we don't have good data on that.
Okay. Yeah, so as of last Friday, they did say about seven of the different variants had been identified in Massachusetts. But I haven't heard since.
Yeah.
I think, to your point, Marian, we've been very lucky to be able to add a number, as Tiffany said, of Medical Reserve Corps volunteers, both clinical and non-clinical. Tiffany has also added to her team a number of per diem and substitute nurses, many of whom are engaged as full-time nurses in the hospital or school nurses in other communities, but who wish to volunteer in Needham. And so that's enabled us to have, as Tiffany said, seven nurses working at different stations, plus Tiffany and Hannah overseeing and drawing vaccine. So we were very happy with how it went, and Tiffany and her team did a great job sort of planning out a well-run operation.
Just amazing teamwork. Thank you.
Yes, it was. Matt? And then John?
Yes, and I echo that, and thank you. And it's amazing how you brought the community together, the coordination. It's just terrific. So, good news. Good to see that Needham's still in the yellow, and the trends right now look favorable. So that's a bit of good news as well. I did note how you said, my father's 90 years old, and I brought him to Gillette, and my wife's grandmother's 91, and they went to Gillette. She went to Gillette as well. And that was very smooth. But what I did notice is that, as you talked about, Tim, the registration for the second dose. And if we weren't there, or even to register them, it never would have happened. And I saw people there that were confused, and you know, you try to help when you can, but it's kind of awkward. So the fact, I think, that you're stepping up and filling in those gaps is tremendous. And I think it's calling people, all those things that we take for granted, that's very, very difficult for that age group. So I want to thank you for that. I just did have a question as far as opening up the town. I got asked a couple times in this past week, you know, schools are gonna go back unlimited. Was it K-2 in March? And the question's been asked to me about, like, the library, some other towns have libraries open. And do we have an idea from you and the Board of Health of kind of, as the schools did coordinate, when we get to see those stats or metric or numbers where we want them to be to, to get to that next phase?
Sure, I think that's, that's important to understand. I think, you know, we do have to process our risk in context. I think Tiffany and I both reviewed sort of the operational plans for each division when we kind of came back from, from entirely remote operations to to in-person operations. And the library, I think, did come up with a very good, safe plan. I do know that some communities have had in-person library hours. I think it's possible that we could eventually get back, and I would like to see the community level come down quite a bit more, but we could have in-person library operations with some modifications. I think the, for COVID purposes, I don't know if it's going to be the type of thing where people can stay quite a long time and, and, you know, read and go on the computer, but there might be some option, working with, with Anne McFate and her team, to figure out a way that people could go in physically for a limited period of time, maybe on a staggered basis to access the library, absolutely.
And once those trends, like you said, come down with a certain level, I think that would be kind of the, that would be the cutoff, so to speak, when, when we start having that discussion?
Absolutely, yeah. I, I think we're hopeful that the, the trend line continues to be down. I think the, there are two things sort of fighting against, or maybe two things on one side, one thing on another. The, the things that are in our favor is that vaccinations are happening, and that the speed of vaccination is picking up both in Needham and statewide. The other thing in our favor is that weather eventually will get warmer, and that will allow people to be outside more, and, and that makes it much harder for the virus to spread. The thing that's working against us, as Marian noted, is the different variants, some of which are far more transmissible than the sort of current dominant strain of COVID. So it's a, it's a question of sort of how those two, those factors sort of interact.
Thank you again.
John?
Thank you. Thanks, Tim and Tiffany. Good report. And I have a couple of questions. First of all, are we, how far out are we booking? Can people book appointments in Needham? At number one. And then, when do you think that the over 65, the next phase will, or the next piece of phase two will, will open up? Are we within a week or two or three, or, and I know it's the governor that will set that tone, but, so, appointments and appointment availability, and then the next, the next group?
So Tiffany, I know we aren't quite yet ready to make it posted on the town website, but would you mind talking about the next two clinics we do have planned?
Sure. So the way we decipher the booking of the clinics is I don't find out till Friday if we actually are going to get vaccine, and then I don't receive it in hand in person until the following Tuesday or Wednesday. So we try to, it's a juggling game of managing first dose and second dose, so we don't have those cross on the same day, especially if we produce larger clinics. And so we have to take a couple of days to figure out how, when, and where that's gonna happen, and make sure we have enough staffing for that. So our next clinics will be next Tuesday and next Thursday, so the 16th and the 18th. Tuesday is 12 to 7 at the Center at the Heights, and Thursday will be 12:30 to 7. I believe those are the right times. And those will be posted up on the state website Friday at 9:00 AM for the public to access. We still will be working through some of the seniors, and CAS will still be calling around and getting some people, some of the slots that are available for those 75-plus in Needham specifically as well.
Tiffany, if you don't mind, John, if you don't mind, Tiffany, can you talk about our process when we have a call-down list, if there are people who don't show up or people who cancel?
Sure. During the clinic, it's, it's been a little bit chaotic, so we're working on a better process to do it, but what, what we usually do is we have a list of people who we may have contacted or have contacted us who fall into the age bracket and the phase one portion that we call as people cancel or don't show up. We do try to first, especially when it was like on Sunday with snow, we do try to call, give a courtesy call to those who didn't show up and say, are you still coming? Or your appointment was two hours ago, please give us a call in the next 30 minutes. If we don't have any, we will be canceling your appointment, opening it up to somebody else. So that's one way we do it. At the end, it's kind of been a mad rush for us at the end of trying to make sure we get them all filled out and get enough people there. So we just work off of that call list, and we'll continue to call down to the people that have either contacted us or that we have put on a list that we know are in need of the vaccine, and we'll work from there.
And in some instances, especially when you're talking about 4:30 PM on a Sunday during a snowstorm, it's not necessarily that feasible to call an 80-year-old and say, can you get to the Center at the Heights within 20 minutes and we can vaccinate you? So we, we did go in that instance to some of the highest priority in the next, still within phase two, but not yet eligible for these emergency appointments. So we did call on some teachers who work with the most high-need students, the autistic students, who have trouble wearing masks in the, in the high school, and we got seven of them vaccinated. We also worked with our DPW drivers who were in town and are also one of the critical infrastructure workers that are going to be in one of the next steps, and we did get some of them vaccinated as well.
And what about, do we have any forethought as far as when the next group, 65-plus and people with two comorbidities will be accepted into, into the vaccination program?
Tiffany and I were talking about this today, and I think we anticipate on Thursday or Friday that Governor Baker's will say he's going to open up either Monday or Tuesday, maybe not Monday, because it's a holiday, but maybe still Monday. That he, that effective Monday or Tuesday, that 65-plus will be eligible to register for clinics. That's not a guarantee, but that's sort of what we think.
Good. No, thank you. Thank you.
Dan, do you have anything to add? You're on mute.
No, no, I'm on. Yeah. Excellent work. And about the, the policy decision about having, allowing people from out of town to attend our clinics, absolute. The goal is to get this vaccine done statewide. And particularly, one of the striking things is, there's been a number of different kinds of bottlenecks and problems with this in the whole structure. But the more experience that we have, the more that you learn, the more the system can be, can be improved. The biggest single problem right now is just that we're way behind where it would be desirable to be in terms of supply. But that's gonna get resolved. I think in the coming weeks, we'll see significant improvement in supply availability and the fact that the governor might be able to lower that move to the next group next week is indicative of that. I think one of the, kind of the worries or the things that's on my mind is people have had a long, this has been a long haul for people that they didn't expect, and there's been a lot, there is a lot of stress. And even the good news of the, the increasing vaccine and the, and the, and the threshold groups that are able to come in and so on, adds anxiety onto that stress. And I guess, I just think the more that we can do to just stay kind of positive, patient, persistent, be good neighbors, we will get through this. If we maintain another, you know, 90 days of the discipline that we've had, and avoid having, you know, people saying, I can't stick with these rules anymore. We've done a lot of good. We've done better than a lot of the surrounding communities, and I, I just think that if we're patient and we work together, we will be able to see this, see this through. Thank you.
I'd just like to latch on to for our people who believe that once they get the shot, they're not gonna have to wear a mask. And I think we need to get the public to And I think that we need to get the public to a better level of awareness about how important it is to continue until we're ahead of this. Um, and just having observed some of what happened at our clinic and two characteristics that struck me were how efficient and well-run and how compassionate and positive the atmosphere was. I think everybody who had that experience in getting the shot there felt that everything went well and that they were cared for in the process. So kudos to, to you, Tim and Tiffany and everybody else who pitched in. It was great.
Thank you. I, I do agree on the, um, need to continue to emphasize some of the public health measures that we do to, to reduce chances of infection. And that's going to continue, um, for a long time after people are vaccinated. Uh, Tiffany, I had a meeting with, uh, Cindy Gonzalez, Needham's Public Information Officer, to talk about the outlines of a campaign today, actually. So we're, we're, that is definitely on our list.
Thank you. Any closing remarks, Stephanie, that you want to make or?
Me? No. Uh, I mean, I mean, thank you, everybody. It, it really was a, a team effort, but, um, we will continue this. And as we continue to receive more vaccine, I'm hoping it's on a weekly basis, we will quickly transition to a lot of clinics really quickly. So, um, we'll keep plugging along and doing great. And thank you.
And we should give a shout out to Talib too, who did an amazing job.
Yes. Talib and Kristen Scobal both are two of our major hands with this as well. So we think we're grateful for them.
Very grateful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next item, unless anybody has any further questions. John?
I'd like to move the appointments on the consent.
Um, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Brings us to the vote. Um, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Um, and the chair votes yes. Yes, as have it. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the, um, 2020 financial audit presentation. And for the public who may or may not know, there is a standing joke that it always seems like the auditors were just here. Except that the last time they were here, we met in person. So now it's pretty clear that they were here a year ago and it wasn't last month. So with that, I'd like to welcome, Dave Davidson and, uh, Alina Korsak. Dave, Dave?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, we come before you to present, as we do every year, the, uh, results and findings of the annual audit. As a reminder to the, uh, board, we have a goal to have the audit presented to you within 180 days of the close of the fiscal year. And unfortunately, this year that did not happen. Uh, a recurring theme you're going to hear, but it was certainly a consequence of COVID-19 that made everything for the auditors and for us to, uh, complete all the steps necessary and get the work done in order to come before the board. But we are here, uh, this evening, uh, to the board, uh, to present, um, what the auditors, uh, have to say about the town's, uh, fiscal 2020, um, audit close. Uh, there were, uh, several, uh, recommendations which the auditors have made, which we do not disagree. We are in agreement with them. And I think the process, uh, moved slowly, but it moved, uh, efficiently and cooperatively. And, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, if, uh, you would so allow, uh, Alina Korsak, uh, the independent auditor from Melanson, would like to give the board a PowerPoint presentation.
Please, you're always welcome, Alina. You were here last year as well. So please, the floor is yours. Do you need help sharing the screen or are we all set with that?
You should be able to see.
Thank you.
You should be able to see the PowerPoint now.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm here just to give you a brief overview of the financial results for June 30, 2020. I'll start with the fact that we work with your management and we expressed an opinion on your financial statements. As a standard financial statement, the opinion, it does not include an opinion on management discussion analysis or your required supplemental information like BVA, pension and OPAP schedules. We've also issued a management letter, as David mentioned, and I'll go over it shortly. We've also issued the governance letter and the governance letter is very standard. It's just a tiny few-page letter that basically says we didn't have any disagreements with management. We don't believe there are any uncorrected material in the statements and some other required communication. So the audit process really just involves us obtaining evidence about the amounts and disclosures in your financial statements. The financial statement audit is not an internal control audit, but we do obtain an understanding of how the internal control works in the town. And we test various transaction cycles on a sample basis. I did want to mention this because rule-setting agencies are not going to make it any easier for the future. There is a GASP that's going to be effective for June 30, 21, that accounting will have to spend time on. And there's another one that's going to be affected the following fiscal year. And there are a lot more in store in the future, including revenue recognition and totally changing the financial statement model, which is, uh, huge. And, um, nobody's looking forward to that, I don't think. So on the overview of financial statements, we did issue unmodified opinions and that just means there were no modifications necessary to make your financial statements be in a conformity that gap, the general accepted accounting principles. The opinion is followed by MDNA and the management discussion analysis is just a summary of key financial highlights. And then after that, we have the long-term perspective financial statements. It's on accrual basis and they're government-wide. And then followed are the fund financial statements. And for governmental funds, they are a short-term perspective, which means that modified accrual basis. Followed are the notes to the financial statements and then the RSI. But Needham also has SSI supplemental information. It's not listed here because it's not part of the basic financial statements, but it's something optional that the town puts in as the water and the sewer budget versus actual. And now we're going to go into the key amounts in your financial statements. And this slide here, it talks about your general funds and assigned fund balance. And here's where I'm going to give you page numbers because, uh, you've seen the financial statements. Um, i- if you're looking at them on paper, page 23, if you're looking at them at PDF, you can just go to the top and type in page 26. So your SMP rating calls this a healthy or strong fund balance. So the total unassigned fund balance for general fund is $28.8 million as of 6/30/20. And it's made up, made up of 24.5 million operating and 4.3 stabilization. And just to remind us, general, so it's general stabilization, not other stabilization and it's general operating. So the same unassigned fund balance for 6/30/19 was $24 million. I cut up a note at the bottom of this chart from your management discussion analysis, and that's page 10 of PDF H13 to help explain why there was a $4.8 million increase. So the $12 million favorable budgetary results have to be offset with the fact that you used fund balance for next year of $8 million. That, those are the primary factor for that $4.8 million increase. And the budget versus actual is on page 79, PDF 82, but I have another slide on it. So we'll talk a little more about it later. So the strong or healthy fund balance, this is unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. That's also on p- page 10 of PDF 13 in your management discussion analysis. The 17% is a really great percentage. If you ever look at GF OA, they recommend two months reserves and that is about 17%. So, uh, that is, uh, basically being on the right track here, but the 17%. And you could see how it compares to the previous three fiscal years. And this is the summarized budget versus actual results, which is in detail on your page 79 of PDF 82 of your financial statements. And this is what NSAP calls strong budgetary flexibility in your rating report. We mentioned $12 million. Uh, it's a little different presentation. So if you take the revenues in excess of budget of 3.8, unspent expenditures of 7.6, you almost get to $12 million. We just have to keep in mind that transfers in and transfers out are considered other financing sources and other financing uses. So the other financing sources of negative 10.3 million dollars, it's actually positive 464 for transfers, which is included in that 12 million. And then negative 10.8 million dollars. So when you use free cash, uh, use a bond premium or use a mobile surplus, those are budgeted, but you wouldn't have actual amounts for those because those are not actual revenues. So they automatically would be the negative, uh, amount in the variance column. So that with the use of free cash, use of bond premium and use of mobile surplus was the negative 10.8 included in that other financing source column. On the following slide, uh, we have bonds payable and you can find those in your accrual balance sheet on page 20 of PDF 23. Detail for those is on page 53 of PDF 56. I would like for you to also look at the following slide in conjunction with bonds payable because not stable is just interim financing and it's going to get permanently financed. So if you look at the two slides together, then you'll see that it's very consistent. That, that is very stable. It, it's, it's pretty evenly, um, for all the last three years. It, it's, it's a similar amount. Now that is something that SMP rating report calls a positive credit factor partly because 67% of your bonds payable are going to be repaid within 10 years. So it's a kind of a rapid payout and, uh, considered a positive credit factor. And then we're going to talk about net pension liability, which SMP rating report calls manageable. So if you look at 2020 versus 2019, you see a $5.6 million increase. But that's primarily driven by the discount rate change. So it's also key to point out that 6/30/19 was measured as of 12/31/18 and 6/20 was measured as of 12/31/19. And those are called measurement dates. And then, so 12/31/18 had a discount rate of 7.25, while 12/31/19 had a discount rate of 6.5. So that is really the primarily, uh, primary factor of why then that pension liability increased. Similarly, we have that OPAP liability also called manageable. And also the reason for that $4.5 million increase is primarily a result of discount rate change. So this, uh, this is what we call a prior look back. It's, it gets interesting because Needham has many pages in the notes to the financial statements. And there's also our SI requires supplemental information for pension and OPAP. And it's tricky because there are different measurement dates and OPAP is measured as the previous fiscal year. So the 6/20 is measured in the 6/19. Uh, uh, so sometimes if you look at the financial statements and think there are two sets of data that is conflicting, that is a result of, uh, two different measurement dates because there is the OPAP plan, which doesn't issue standalone financial statements. So those disclosures have to be current as of 6/20, uh, in the same Needham financial statements as, um, the Needham's portion of this OPAP liability, which is single and twice. So it's all Needham's portion. Uh, also in the same financial segments with a different measurement, but the measurement date is different. So if it gets confusing while reviewing the financial statements, it's because it's, uh, what we call a prior look back using prior measurement date. So that is, uh, also what's, um, considered a good factor for SMP rating. And that is all I'm going to touch on the financial segment side. And they'll go into the management letter comment now. It's good to point out that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we reported in our management letter. These comments is what we call other factors that we bring into your consideration. All called, officially called other matters in the, in this management letter. The first one was to follow through on prior recommendations. So there were a, a few recommendations in the prior year, including implementing UG, Uniform Guidance Rules. There, there were some other ones, improving the departmental receipt policy, some IT policy, formalizing it, putting it right in and some HR, but getting their policy and, um, making sure that the terminated and placed access removed timely and things like that. So those, uh, were just comments from prior management letter that, uh, as David mentioned, uh, just got pushed back a little bit in implementation due to COVID. But the town has a very nice response. If you look at any of these management letter comments and you look at, uh, town's response, the town lays out a timeline of when it's going to be implemented. So the comment two and comment three are current year comments. So the first one is on reconciliation process of withholding accounts. And the town has a lot of withholding accounts and there are significant balances in them. And there were variances identified, just hasn't, haven't been resolved as of 6/20. Uh, and, and the town has a plan to do that. They could look at the response and same with the last comment on OPAP's table. There are variances that have been identified. They were just not resolved, uh, as of 6/20. So that covers the management letter. And, um, this is just a, a standard disclaimer. And this presentation is, uh, to be read in conjunction with the audit financial statements and related disclosures. And, um, I'm going to just turn it over to you for any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions or comments? Uh, Dave, do you want to say anything in closing?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of points. One, uh, an invitation was extended to school committee members and finance committee members as well. And I just took a look at our attendees and I see some have bailed themselves of the presentation. The other, a couple of points and some of the charts that you were seeing, just as a reminder to the, uh, board, due to COVID-19, we took some deliberate steps in fiscal 20 to conserve resources. And you saw that evident in a couple of points is the, uh, turnback from, uh, budgeted expenditures was, uh, uh, much higher than it has been in previous years. And that was a result of proactive steps that we took to, uh, um, to delay on hiring and, uh, cutting back on expenditures and delaying services or actually canceling contracts in order to conserve, uh, revenue. The town also chose, uh, not to appropriate $4 million of the free cash that was appropriate, uh, that was certified last year. And that $4 million, uh, was, uh, incorporated into the fund balance for 6/30 and is going to be part of the higher free cash amount that we are anticipating, uh, for this year. In recognition that we will have some one-time costs that we'll need to address, uh, with appropriations, uh, come the annual town meeting time. The other, uh, noteworthy item was the, um, surplus revenue, uh, was a decline from prior years. And again, that was a recognition, uh, on why we took the steps that we did, uh, in terms of lowering our revenue estimates and everything. Cause we knew that revenues were going to come in slower and, and we took those proactive steps with prior to the enactment of the current operating budget, FY21. And we also continued that, uh, approach with our FY22 recommendations.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions for Dave? Uh, Dave Matthews?
I just, I wanted to just, under the, when you were talking about the pension, uh, liability, the change in the discount rate assumption from a little over 7% to a little under 7%. Am I correct in understanding that's a more conservative assumption and that therefore means that it's less of a concern that the, that the, that the total estimated liability goes up as a result? Am I correct?
That is correct. It's the industry. It's an industry standard that's been going down. We've seen clients decrease it slowly by a quarter percentage point. So this is a more conservative and is used as a better more conservative discount rate.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt. Matt?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to say, you know, to Dave and the finance department, your team and to the finance committee here. It's just terrific work. And this really highlights what a sound financial town we are and how we we plan forward. And like you're talking about, Dave, things that contingencies that we're putting in place for incredibly difficult year. You talk to different sections, it's been difficult for businesses and schools, et cetera, but also for the town as far as, you know, finances and how we're going to plan moving forward and budgetary. It's been difficult in that area. So I just want to thank you for that. And, you know, I did to Dan's question, you know, OPEB has been one of the things that we've worked with the finance committee and the finance department and town manager to try to stay ahead of. And, you know, I see that comment manageable. I'm assuming that's not just like a C manageable grade, but like that's a way of saying that we are on the right track. And I'm just curious, in your professional opinion, you do this for other towns and look around the state, assuming we're in a good position with that term manageable, which has been one of our one of our goals.
Oh, yes, most certainly, because when I looked at the word manageable, I was a little bit surprised. I thought it was going to say something how greatly funded it is. So it's definitely funded.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else care to ask a question or make a comment? Thank you very much for coming in, Alina, and thank you for the work you've done for the town. John, do you want to say something or are you waving? Okay.
I was waving goodbye. Yeah.
Okay. Have a safe drive home, Alina.
Thank you. Guys, have a great night.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion event in two thousand twenty-five. And I'm going to call on Mary Ann Cooley, who is the clerk of the select board to give her presentation on this item.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to ask Sandy if she can share our presentation for this. And with that, she's looking to find it on her computer there, right? So I'll just start talking while while it's coming up here. This is a project that we started a couple of years ago. And its goal was to look at major segments of our infrastructure to assess, you know, our vulnerabilities, be sure we weren't missing something major that was going to need to be updated. We we started with a question that was as simple as, well, what really is our population? And where are we headed population-wise? So with that, we're going to look at something that takes us systematically through each of kind of those infrastructure sections of the town and take a look at where we are. Sandy, the next slide, just our working group here included Marty Jacobs, John Conley, or Marty Jacobs from planning, John Conley from the FinCom, me from the select board and Sunnack is from school committee. And we did start in June of two thousand nineteen and we finished in June of two thousand twenty with a few other addenda coming in after that. Next slide. As I said, our goal was to understand the impact of the growth that we'd had, both commercial and residential, on the town's infrastructure. We looked at traffic, transportation, technology, water, sewer, drains, roads, bridges, and school facilities. Okay, so all of those different areas were considered. Let's start with our demographics, which are first. Sandy, if you can take us to the next slide. This just kind of gives us a look at the history of the town. You can see back in the nineteen fifties, we were, you know, had some population that was in the mid, you know, fifteen, sixteen thousand people. And then we came up to this number that we've been hanging around in since around nineteen seventy, just under thirty thousand and now looking like we might be just over. But you can see we've kind of bounced around a little bit in the upper twenties. What is important to note is where we fit relative to the rest of the environment that we're in. So we have grown since, you know, nineteen ninety, a little bit more slowly than Norfolk County. So we've grown about five point three percent annually. And Norfolk County is in the area of growing about six point eight and the Boston metro area at eight point seven. So thinking about our town, there's probably some factors since two thousand that have led to our growth being a little bit slower. Housing and the relative age of the population that was here are two big ones. Okay, next slide, please. Just some demographic trends to to think about who lives in Needham. Our household size, it says steadily increased, but that talks about going from two point six three in two thousand to two point seven seven, you know, in two thousand seventeen. So steadily increased is on a modest basis. But I I do think we see that as we're seeing, you know, some shift in population with some more people becoming empty nesters and families having increasing numbers of children. So it's, you know, coming in some some different kinds of ways. Our age distribution is worth thinking about because we in fact have a significant population of school-aged children at twenty-one point two percent. That's hot much higher than in Norfolk County, about five percentage points higher. And similarly, our twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds at about five point seven percent are significantly under Norfolk County, which is at twelve point six percent there. So as we talk about, a lot of our high school students leave the town for college. And then it's very tricky for people who are in the family formation years of twenty-five to thirty-four to move back into Needham because of the cost of our housing. Then again, we find that age sixty-five plus, we're at about eighteen two point two percent of our population in sixty-five plus, whereas Norfolk County would be fifteen point nine. So we almost have this barbell sort of curve in our population with the young and the old and a little hollowed out in the middle. Next slide. I think I'm not going to be telling you things that you don't know. We have a highly educated population. Again, relative to Norfolk County, nearly nearly eighty percent of the town with college degrees for adults and almost forty-three percent of those with graduate or professional degrees. That median household income at one hundred and forty-one, six ninety, again, much higher than Norfolk County as a whole and a significant number of households earning over two hundred thousand dollars. So an affluent community in town. Next slide. In terms of demographic trends, and I'm looking now. Okay, I didn't print out that sheet with the number. The majority of homes, eighty-one percent, are single-family units. That number has increased since two thousand ten. Or I I take that back. The number of multifamily units has increased since two thousand ten proportionally. And I failed to print that out and get it in front of me. So my fault, my error. But you will see there were a number of new units that were created, six hundred and sixty-six referenced here in multifamily developments. That includes places, you know, that we think about, the Kendrick, Moderna, et cetera, that have evolved over the last decade. All right, home sale prices are, you know, I think Needham has gotten used to them, but a median price of one point one million dollars for a home in Needham. I think I understand that houses that are selling to developers for knockdowns, which is one of the main ways that housing is turning over in Needham, are going somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars for a lot. So Matt may have better numbers on that, more recent. Next slide, economic trends. And I'm trying to go through this relatively quickly. I noticed that Kate gave me five minutes on the on the agenda. I'm going to end up taking longer than that.
That was a typo, Ms. Cooley.
Economic trends. So things that drive the kinds of jobs that are located in Needham. We did see an increase in jobs in Needham by about twenty-two percent from two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen. So the jobs that are located here grew. A huge portion of that growth came in the healthcare sector, about fifty-two percent increase over the prior decade for jobs in the healthcare sector. All right, and when we look at where overall sectors, there are three that drive our particular economy. Healthcare, professional scientific and technology roles and educational services are the largest percent of our residents and the jobs that are here. We do have workers who are coming to town who, you know, live in town and outside of town. And we we send workers out. So traffic goes in both directions. But the result of increased jobs here means more jobs coming into town. And then we do send people from Needham to Boston, Newton, Cambridge, and Waltham as other directions. Okay. We've done a variety of work over the last decade in the area of land use and zoning. So in two thousand two and two thousand eleven, we did the rezoning related to Needham Crossing that has led to a number of names of the firms here, TripAdvisor, Veristem, NBCU, Universal Children's Hospital Coming and IDG related to work in Needham Crossing. We've also townwide looked at ways to expand, be responsive to residents' desire by adding accessory dwelling units for in-laws and for other reasons. And we undertook the large house review in two thousand sixteen that, you know, is related to tear downs that are happening and to the market for people's houses and the decisions that they're making if, when they decide they're prepared to sell their home in town. So those are different issues that have been undertaken. One of the things that I didn't say there was, of course, we also passed our forty B threshold, something I know that this board is well aware of, although we continue to work in the area of expanding housing options. Water, sewer, and drains. Hang on, I'm making myself a note. In the case of water, sewers, and drains, I'm going to say that to me, this is one of the biggest vulnerabilities that we have. It's it's something that we're certainly aware of. We live in a town that has some hundred and thirty-five miles of street water mains. But the issues that we will continue to grapple with in maintaining that structure and in maintenance and capital improvements to improve to meet the stormwater regulations. The answer is for something related to stormwater that's been created over fifty years, it's going to take many years and millions of dollars for us to fix it. We don't actually have a number for what that cost will be going forward. But figuring out how to meet those regulations and regulate our stormwater at a time when we've got increased impervious surfaces, you know, larger houses built, there is more stormwater that we're taking in our storm drains. All those different factors are are things that we will have to consider in our planning going forward. Traffic and mobility is an interesting area. You know, the data that we have related to traffic is pre-pandemic. So that the traffic that we look at today is very different from the traffic problems that drove some of the reason for this study. We were concerned about the impact of traffic growth in the town based on the development that we'd had. So what do we know? We know that automobiles are certainly the predominant mode of transportation in the town. We are very auto-centric. But work from home before the pandemic was something that was slightly increasing over time. It will be interesting to see post-pandemic what work from home shifts we see on a much broader scale. All right, eight point seven wasn't much, but two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, I think those numbers are going to be higher on at least some days of the week. You know, I think schedules will be different going forward. About thirteen percent of our work trips from Boston are done by public transit transit. So it's a relatively low number. And again, we worry about that as we're seeing, for example, with respect to the commuter rail with the pandemic impact, looking to cut those hours and the accessibility of the commuter rail for our residents. How will that impact and drive more people into cars? What's that impact on traffic? So those are challenges that we have. One of the other issues is that much of our traffic is through traffic. People who are driving through their town on the way to some somewhere else. And one of, in fact, the metrics that we were looking at on a different but unrelated issue that will come forward to this board sometime soon was we were looking at traffic stops. And I can tell you that eighty-seven percent of our traffic stops are for non-residents and only thirteen percent are for residents. So that's telling you something about, you know, what happens randomly when you're stopping people. Is it people who are going through or people who aren't? Interesting data point. Next slide on technology. So we do take advantage of technology. And in fact, one of the, when you're reading the report, it will tell, make a recommendation that the town should put in place online permitting for the building department. That's already been done. Given the pandemic, there was a hard full court press to get online permitting in place for DPW Health and Human Services and for the building department so that we could continue to meet the needs of our residents and of people who want to do business with the town. So that happened, a good thing. Other pieces of technology, we have taken advantage of closed circuit TV for doing our sewer line inspections. That's been tremendously helpful. As I mentioned, the water issues related to water being a big thing and sewers. So that is one piece of technology. We're always looking for what we can do. One of the other areas that we've talked about over the last decade has been five G and and its related small cell technology. As this board knows, we put a policy in place looking to regulate that somewhat to the degree that we can or to put in place some our expression of preferences for how that occurs in town. But as anybody watching the Super Bowl commercials saw, the advertising for five G continues to build, working to create some demand for that product. Our population estimates, one of one of the things that we really were very curious about when we started this study. You know, there was a sense that we had been adding housing and adding housing. So what didn't that mean that we were significantly larger? And I would say that we're creeping up in size. But we've also learned that there is this graying in town as I talked about the number of people who are over age sixty-five in town. And that means that we do have more houses that are inhabited by empty nesters or by older singles. So the net effect has been a growth. That top box there, the two thousand twenty-five forecast suggests will be around thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty residents in the town of Needham. So some some marginal increase in growth in population and demand and services from those folks. Next slide. Our school facilities is something certainly that we continue to worry about. And we have taken a look recently at the school master plan, looking at what's required there. What we do know is that there will be, because of the aging of our, as I said, our significant young student population into the high school. That does look as though it will create some need for additional capacity in the high school. There's some selected places where we'll need classes, classrooms at particular schools. We continue to worry about, you know, when will we be able to rebuild the Mitchell School and the Middle School? But by and large, although school population is shifting with the current housing situation in town, that we are generally projecting that school enrollments will remain flat. And again, that was something that was a considerable discussion when we planned to do this study. We were also worried about the impact of the multifamily housing units that had been added and what they would add to our schools. And I, our experience there has largely mirrored what consultants did tell us ahead of time, which is that the number of students that we recognize from those projects has been lower than we worried about for large numbers of units. So generally, with the projects that we have, we see somewhere between, you know, twenty-five and forty-five students per project that have come forward despite the significant numbers of units. And what we've learned, I think, over that process is that often families And what we've learned, I think, over that process is that often families move into those units without children. Or they may have a single child, probably preschool age. But in fact, when children start going to school, they're looking to buy a house either in Needham or somewhere else. And therefore, those have not been the places where we've recognized significant numbers of students. So an important perspective to keep in place. But given the fact that our schools are tight. Right? We continue to be careful about the number of, of units of housing. And students that we potentially add, so that's, that's a careful balance. Looking at what it means with people moving into town, into housing. And what it means as we add those units. So adding units of housing has in fact, kept our student enrollment generally flat rather than declining as some other towns are seeing. Okay, the fact that it's flat means that our schools are all full. But if we were to significantly add units in such a way that it required the town to build a new elementary school. To do something significantly different at the high school. We already know we'll need to be rebuilding Pollard, but a much larger Pollard. If that drove it, that would drive hundreds of millions of dollars in cost. Because we are in fact, right on the edge with where our school population is. So I think we'll continue to watch where that goes carefully. With that. Let me find my agenda slides, sorry. There were a few extra pieces that we asked them to take a look at, so let's just quickly go through this. In the Gateway Project, we had asked if they would be able to find some examples. And I, we didn't include the case studies here, but we asked if they would find some examples of other gateways to towns. That were located and placed similar to Highway Commercial One. Most of the examples that came out tend to be more retail oriented. Not the kind of mixed use that we were really thinking about or, or more you know, business lab kinds of uses. So at any rate, but we did get some examples there and understood what was done in some other areas. Next slide, with respect to senior housing. They laid out a variety of options that you see listed there under types of housing. As I think the board knows, there's tremendous desire on the part of Needham residents. For housing options, should they choose to move out of their house? Where they would love to stay in town in some kind of senior housing. Those are housing that has various amenities that are attractive to that community. They like the proximity here in town of, to medical facilities. And are willing in, in those cases to live in a denser kind of development. We are seeing over fifty-five folks, for example, looking at places like the Kendrick. So even though it's not an over fifty-five community, that has been a significant marketing opportunity for them. As we think about how can we consider more opportunities for senior housing. They created some strategies and made some recommendations to us, but I think among one of the most critical ones. Would be continuing to cultivate relationships with residential developers who work in this space. And there are some in the area who we could cultivate to take advantage of and look at. Where are other places in town that might work for this? We've also heard from developers we've talked to who have looked at some parcels in town. That it's challenging to combine both affordable and over age fifty-five in the same property, not impossible, but can be more challenging. Next slide. In Lower Chestnut, we've looked at Chestnut Street, trying again to understand what could and should be done there as we think about redeveloping that. There was some zoning that had been passed several years ago. That permitted some options or could permit some options. But we haven't seen real activity on Chestnut Street. A big part of the challenge is that the ownership of Chestnut Street is broken up into many smaller parcels, so it really takes groups of parcels to work together to be able to redevelop certain areas. Otherwise, it can't be done economically. So, you know, trying to understand what are the components that will make that work? And does, does it, can it be put together in such a way that's economically feasible with the zoning that's there? Was one of the questions. If we look at the next page. They looked at five different examples that would have taken some cooperation between different parcels. In vendors, in one case, the T is involved. In a couple of cases, Beth Israel Deaconess or BI Lahey Health would be involved. They looked at parcels from thirty-seven Chestnut down to the Junction Lot. And what we learn is they're going through these different parcels and determining what redevelopment of that area would look like. There were a couple of takeaways, I'd say. The first one is that across the board in each of these scenarios. There is a notion that the mandated parking for a mixed-use development that includes a residential component and a commercial component. Under our current zoning, overstates the need for parking, so requires that parking be overbuilt. We definitely, I hope the planning board will take up. As suggested here, a look at parking requirements in our base zoning, because there's a sense that parking requirements are in fact overstated across the board. Dollars that you spend obviously for parking in a building that's not going to be used. Are dollars that could be allocated somewhere else. Of these projects here, our consultant would have concluded that it would have been possible to put together economically feasible projects in three out of these five cases, using the zoning that we have. In two out of the five cases, they described it as marginally economically viable. So there had been a question about whether the existing zoning that had been put in place that hadn't led to redevelopment. Was sufficient to set the conditions that could result in successful redevelopment? The answer is maybe not quite. Okay, so there could be work to be done in the case of Chestnut Street, so. And with that, I think I will open it for questions. I think the study produced some interesting. You know, some interesting takeaways for that, for us, in some ways it validated pieces that we already knew, which is that we've actually been planning pretty well. Across all these different pieces of infrastructure. I think there's one sewer located out on one twenty-eight that's named as a vulnerable point in the water system, you know, but otherwise the fundamental plans that we have in place and priorities are, are well designed and serve the town well. You know, in terms of traffic, the notion of how much of the traffic is not traffic driven by Needham. And therefore, we're going to get it no matter what we do. I think that's one that's difficult for everybody to understand, but that appears to be a distinct fact. We are location, 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 and we are located on one twenty-eight. And that means that all roads headed to one twenty-eight from west and south of us tend to go through Needham, and that's what we see happening. Unless we put up, you know, gates on the borders, there will be cars. So that will occur. Other than that, I'll open it for questions now. John.
Thank you, Mary Ann. That was a good report. And I, I think my, you know, the, the ongoing question I have, and I know that you probably discussed, I'd be curious to know what the, what the discussion was with respect to population. Always been a bone of contention that, you know, and it appears that you're using at least up to twenty seventeen, the federal census. Which as we know, doesn't account for college-age students. Yet we also know that the town clerk does a census that we all respond to. And I've always been a believer that that is the census and that is the number that we should be taking. Even though I understand that for seven months of the year, college students may be away from home in a, in a non-pandemic year, and I say maybe. Similarly, we have plenty of snowbirds that might account for fifteen to twenty percent of the population. That might be gone, and I know, I know many and others on this board may know many. That have gone anywhere from three months to just under six months. So, you know, the elements of it is I, I always like, like to consider, it's where people self-report on our census where they are domiciled. And where they vote. Because I think that, that in my opinion, should be the guiding number that we work towards. That being said, what were your discussions with respect to that? And I, I know we don't have Teddy's census number yet. But I know her number has been showing as, you know, for those people that, that don't look at the annual report like we do, you know. Probably going back to twenty seventeen, I think thirty-three, a little over thirty-three thousand. And so what was the nature of the discussion that you had? And I understand you're trying to make, be consistent. I'd be curious to know, you know, again, we can get this out of the, the annual report, so. Thank you, but good report, great report.
So we did go with the federal census numbers, you know. I hear you, John. I think it's tricky and it's difficult. The, the requirement there is that college students be reported where they are going to college. And having just lived through that on the college side with reporting for the census, the answer is we reported our students from the college. As I know that Olin did and Babson did as well. So those students from Olin, for example, will show up in the Needham Census, by the way that it works. But you're right, that is, you know, a place, so I think we know where some of the differences are. And college students are probably one of the biggest areas. But we also know that those students after they go to college do not tend to come back to Needham. All right, they tend to go to other places. Where they have jobs and where they have housing and things like that. So, which results in our decreased population in that twenty-five to thirty-four, you know, range as I, as I showed. So, I hear you.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mo, you're mute.
Did you look at racial diversity in the community and what if any effect that might have on the numbers of, the number of population that we have now and going forward?
That is a great question. It is not in the report. And it led to a discussion between Kate and me at some point. I, I don't remember when that was, this, this year, sometime in the last year. After the pandemic started and after the work was predominantly done here, where we went back and said, you know, that wasn't a cut here. I think, I think it's a blind spot, and that was really what I talked about at that point. But the work assignment that we gave to a team that was actually diverse. But was to look at the impact of our, you know, commercial and residential growth. And that was not one of the axes that they came back to with us.
And also, the other issue is social or financial diversity, which doesn't necessarily correspond to that. I mean, there, it's a, it's a overlapping Venn diagram, obviously, but.
So we, there is social and economic diverse, or economic diversity is laid out and tables in the report, so I encourage you to read through the whole report. There's actually a lot of information in it. You will find that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Any other questions for Mary Ann? Comments, Matt?
Thank you, and that, the report is unbelievably chock full of data and diagrams and everything else, so a lot of work within. And what struck me when you look at it is, you know, some of the days like two thousand seventeen, and it seems like we're going to be constantly updating, especially after COVID. How that's going to change things moving forward. So I did just have a couple of comments through presentation, there was a lot there, but you know, we talked about the Muzzy Gateway site, and there is a need for fifty-five and over housing. I'm hoping that will be something discussed there. The issue is that people want to downsize, but there is no place to go, and it's that whole cycle there, so I think that might be something that we, we should look at. Traffic, that'll be interesting, you talked about as we move forward, how the pandemic affects that. Looking at Lower Chestnut, I think one of the issues that we have there is that we tried to have people consolidate pieces. But when you look at it and you talked about the return on investment, and I've talked to some of those owners all up and down. Their legacy purchases, they're not interested in selling, but it's not worth it for them to combine. But our zoning doesn't allow smaller parcels and build-outs, and I think we can tell, we're going to speak with the planning board, and I know they're aware of the issue, but one of the issues we have to look at is how can we currently build on those parcels? Parking, as you mentioned, Mary Ann, but also allow FAR on smaller parcels to get something happening there, because that is a second gateway to Needham. When I look at it, and to have that whole stretch redeveloped, I think, is really in all of our best interest, so. There's a lot there in this report and look forward to as it gets updated, how we interpret that data, so, thank you.
Yes, and I also might add on Lower Chestnut, the presence of the hospital, which is a major factor in the development of that area. Coupled with the fact that Norwood Hospital is currently closed. Which changes the profile of that hospital, possibly permanently our hospital. But possibly will decrease in some level of activity over the next couple of years if Norwood ever comes back online.
I think that's really one of the wild cards. It's not clear right now, but the hospital has really flexed. To grow a lot over the course of the last six months. Less than six months even, I think. And what that means going forward, depending on what happens with Norwood, will be a big question, but they have really absorbed that and you know, it's interesting, I see, I think about my house on a main street, right? I see the difference in number of ambulances in front of the house, so it comes in many ways.
Yeah. Great job on this. Dan?
Yeah, it's, it's really an excellent piece of work, and you've summed it up quickly. But there's a tremendous amount of information, and I'm, this will be on the web, on our website, I assume, and if not already, and you know, I think one of the, the areas that we were talking about in getting into this had to do with what direction town, the town's housing policy should be taking, and, and Mo underlined a big loss. I do believe that we're making progress on, and on, on integration year over year in town, and we will continue and, and the Noiri work will contribute, contribute to that as well and, and other intentional efforts. But, and the fact that we added seven hundred units of rental housing, although that's not called out in terms of racial targets, since it's, it's important and helpful. But I think there's an issue, the initial unresolved issue that we had to kind of, I'm not sure what the direction is, which is we're concerned about the loss of economic diversity here, which is, is a fact, and it's related to, to other things. The, the market forces drive prices up. The, what are the subsidizing processes are very complicated and difficult to work with. And we're, the situation is where the state has changed zoning regulations to encourage a goal, and I think one target that I'd seen was a five percent increase in the number of housing units region-wide, which is, is good. We have an odd situation in that we had gotten as a town, and particularly with some specific things that this board did. To try to get ahead of that curve, and we talked about adding those seven hundred units, which is a little more than five percent. So now we, going into the study, one of the questions was, well. I think some members of the board are of a mind, and I'm one of them, that we've really got adding this number of rental units to the town really is going to mean some changes that we don't fully understand and won't for a few years. And you're talking about what the situation is in terms of make sure that we've got enough space in the schools. I think my own take on this, well, what do you do in, in, in the midst, in, because we've really, in a certain sense, done what the state was asking for in these recent revisions, but you can't just sit still, so I think we've been looking at cautious opportunities for improvement, which I think is a good approach. But I'm, and I, but I'm kind of looking at this data and thinking, well, what is the best direction for the, for the town as we look at the next decade? This is very helpful to have, and I don't, I guess I've asked questions, I don't necessarily have the answer to, I don't know if you have some thoughts or insights on that. But the information is a great help.
So I don't, I don't think that we have all the answers, but I do think it is a helpful set of information for us to think about. And you're right, although we worry about economic diversity. We actually still have a significant portion of the population that, that does have a household income below seventy-five thousand dollars, which is non-trivial to think about living in Needham. With that, you know, level of income, so I, I do think that that is part of the challenge overall for us. Is that although there are certainly a very high number of high wage and income earners in town. We do still have a mix. we do still have a mix um, that that we are responsible for. Um, I do want to be sure that I say uh, thank you to Kate for all her tremendous support uh, as we've been going through this process, because it has been um, longer than I think we thought when we started. And um, and and a little bit more involved. And also thank you to Cindy, who helped put the presentation together. And thank you to Urban Partners, who who did all the work for us, as we kept looking at different things and poking and asking for different views on the data that we were getting back. John, I think I saw you wave a hand.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, to, you know, add on to what Dan was saying and Mary Ann to what you were saying, because you really hit the nail on the head with respect to the school, school enrollment is flat, and we have added popular, we have added units of housing, which has kept the enrollment levels at a high point. So we know all of our schools are full. But like you rightly said, the trick is to continue to add housing, but not to the point where it triggers the need for another school. Because, and again, getting back to, you know, taking a look at the populations, the economic diversity, which we try to maintain and try to achieve through our housing policy. We have people that are very wealthy in this town, and we have many people through our actions who live that are qualified, affordable, who are subsidized to a degree on their real estate taxes. And that leaves those people in the middle. And it's the people in the middle that are getting squeezed. So as we, you know, the the trick to adding housing is doing it just as Dan and and Mary Ann have said, which is we need to add it in such a way that it it hits the areas, the strat, it stratifies, stratifies the areas to be added that doesn't tip over the school element where it requires a large capital project that then puts an unreasonable burden on those middle-class households, and especially those households that are earning, that have household incomes of less than seventy-five thousand. So that it's a balancing act, and we all know that, we live that. And I think that the people that I I've spoken with people, and I think we all have, that are like, we need more housing, more housing, more housing. I'm like, we have done well, as Dan said, with adding housing. This board and this town government will continue to add housing. But again, it needs to be looked at in the totality of all of the services that are able to be provided. And I think that's, that's the key in looking. This is a good report. This really gives a lot of information. We, one of the things that we did see that was, I think to some degree unknown, at least by myself and possibly other members of the board, is when the pandemic hit, we saw a larger percentage of food insecurity that was evident through more children and more families with children seeking food help, food aid through the schools. And that started last spring, and I suspect it went through the summer and through the school year. And the reason for that is that people have lost their jobs. People are earning less money. So let's not underestimate that the actions that we take, or the actions that other people may want, it are are going to impact the people that are in the middle that are being continually being squeezed, because the cost to live here continues to go up. So, good report. Thank you so much, Mary Ann.
I'd just like to make one closing comment, if I could, Mary Ann. Um, housing policy is an extremely complex and important issue. We are not an island. And any solution to the region's housing problem will of necessity challenge us, and we need to coordinate our policies and encourage surrounding communities to take similar approaches so that we can meet a a problem that is much larger than just one, one very wonderful town, but it's bigger than us. And we saw in the latest housing bill that the governor signed that the legislature passed, that that imperative is coming down from above, and we have to respond to it in a creative and positive way. And this report helps us to to have a vision for how we will do that.
So I think that's very true. And I think, you know, to me, what's interesting is there are so many threads of this that are ongoing board work um, that Dan did, you know, the draft on the updated forty B policy for the town and how we might approach that in the future. We haven't had a chance to talk about what our new goals might be there, you know, as we talk about, you know, what's our moonshot with making, as we bring in affordable housing, making more of those affordable, but it still has to be attractive for a developer. So finding out who will work with us to create that kind of housing in town.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much. Uh, that brings us to our Director of Public Works, Karis Lustig, is here, I believe, to talk to us about electric vehicle charging stations. Welcome, Karis.
Hello, how are you?
Good thanks. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. Um, so uh, I think this is sort of timely with the presentation of Needham twenty twenty-five, as we sort of envision um, Needham as we move into the future. Um, and I wanted to present to the board about an opportunity to receive some uh, grant funding for some additional electric vehicle chargers. Um, right now, the town of Needham has a few electric vehicle chargers um, attached to public buildings. We have one charger at the PSAB that serves two um, cars, and we have two um, at the Williams School that serves four vehicles. Um, but we have not expanded um, beyond that for um, providing electric vehicle charging within the community. Um, there is an opportunity for some grant funding through the state, and then also some partnership funding through EverSource um, to achieve these um, to add additional stations to the town's inventory at um, either no cost of the town or a low class of the town. Uh, the grant provides a hundred percent of the cost um, for providing stations to the public and sixty percent of the cost for providing stations that are exclusive to the town vehicle use. Um, and that would be the vehicles that the town um, operates. We currently have two electric vehicles that are plugins in our inventory. They are both in the building department. And while we don't have any um, currently that are being requested for our fiscal twenty-two budget, we do envision that that will change um, in in the out years as electric vehicles become more standard. Um, I thought it was timely when I was um, putting together this information. Um, if you watch the Super Bowl, there was a large um, Super Bowl ad that featured Will Ferrell talking about GM converting all of their vehicles to electric by twenty thirty-five. Um, and the governor has also signed um, a bill committing the state of Massachusetts that all vehicles sold in Massachusetts will be electric by twenty thirty-five. So we know that this is a technology um, that both for resident use and also for the town's utilization, um, is going to become more prominent. And we are um, thinking about developing our infrastructure to in order to support um, to support that goal. Um, right now, like I mentioned, we have two plugin um, vehicles. They um, charge at the the station that we have at four seventy. We received that station through an older grant program that we got while we, when we purchased those vehicles. And that grant program does require that those vehicles are open to the public and not exclusive for the town use. Um, it is more challenging than it used to be to get access to our own chargers, because there are more people within the community right now who possess electric vehicles. Um, I believe there was somebody um, pre-COVID who would um, drive to the facility, plug their vehicle in and actually bike to their office. Uh, so it's, it's become, and I've also heard the same thing about people utilizing the ones at the Williams on weekends. Um, right now, we don't charge for the utilization of those um, chargers when we first installed them. There really wasn't a market um, price that we could figure out how to charge. Most of these chargers are either done by municipalities or businesses. And the businesses really are trying to encourage people to stay there longer, so they shop more, so they don't want to charge to disincentivize people from staying there longer. Uh, but we do anticipate that in the future, as electric vehicles do become more standard, that we would offset the cost of um, providing electricity and maintaining them um, as part of the of that system. Um, so our first goal um, as part of this grant program is going to be to provide one charger at the Public Safety Administration, I'm sorry, Public Service Administration Building. Um, that would be exclusive for town use. Um, and like I said, that will be subsidized um, in this program uh, at sixty, by sixty percent. Um, and the real goal is so that our vehicles can be charged every day, and we're no longer competing with residents in town to utilize utilize those chargers. And I imagine in the future, we will be acquiring more electric vehicles um, that would then also utilize um, utilize that charger. And then our second goal um, is to provide chargers at public buildings and public parking lots. Uh, right now, we are investigating, looking at um, PSAB. Again, you'd have a charger that's dedicated to the town, and then a charger that's dedicated or available for residents who are either going to the PSAB or um, likely using our trail, as that's become quite popular during COVID. And then the second option, or the second item we want to look at um, is providing um, chargers in public parking lots, so that um, people who are visiting the businesses in the downtown have access to these chargers um, as well, which we think would be an an advantage to um, both the resident and the the businesses that they would be visiting. So I I really wanted to present this opportunity to the board to get um, a a little bit of perspective on the priority of um, engaging in modernizing some of our parking lots to allow for people to charge their electric vehicles. Um, things that we have to investigate um, is how much do we want to promote the utilization of electric vehicles? Um, you know, do we provide a charge? One of the things we're also investigating is the different types of charges. There is um, a new fast charge system that I believe right now only works with Tesla and a few other models. Um, but we do think that that's going to become more prominent um, in the future. And then um, the other thing we are looking at and currently working with our um, uh, planning department and our engineering department is the layout of our parking lots. As part of this grant, one of the spots that we provide has to be ADA accessible. It doesn't have to be um, required to have a plate, but it has to be accessible. And that may require restriping of certain portions of our lots. Um, and we're trying to do that with minimizing um, any lost spaces, but there is a potential that we may lose up to one space um, if we um, pursue the grant opportunity. Um, again, we think that the benefit of having an electric vehicle charger may outweigh the 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 loss of that space. Um, but it's, you know, something that we do have to consider as well. Um, the good news is, is that we only have to create one ADA accessible space for every twenty chargers we install. So I don't think it's likely we're going to be installing more than twenty chargers in any one location. So the most that we would lose would be one, one spot. And we have worked with a partner from EverSource to identify a few specific locations um, around these buildings that would be best as far as infrastructure in order to install um, additional chargers in town.
I think that's great. Is there any, uh, give anything further, Karis, that you want to talk about?
Um, no, I provided uh, pictures of the current charging station that we have. We are looking at pursuing the same company. Um, the main reason is, oh, first of all, they are considered the one of, you know, the industry standard for public um, charging stations. But beyond that, it enables us to be able to control all of our charging stations with one platform. It would be very difficult for us to have multiple platforms to adjust rates. Um, our handcuff in our um, building design and construction division is very passionate about plugin vehicles. He owns a plugin vehicle as well. And um, he has said, like, the town of Concord, for example, has a tiered charging system where, you know, you get, um, you pay for your electricity, but you pay less for the first two hours, and you pay more um, after two hours to sort of disincentivize people from from using these as their primary charging station. Um, so there's different systems that you can put in place, and having one system throughout the whole town would be more beneficial for us, as opposed to having to adjust this across multiple systems.
I think it's a great thing to be doing. I think there are a couple of policy uh, challenges that people don't often think about. Uh, one of them is, how do you keep people who don't have electric vehicles from parking in those spaces? And do you want to do that? You might not necessarily want to do that, but it's, that's going to become an issue for some folks. The other thing that Tesla does is if you stay at a charger too long, they start charging you a lot of money. So you get, if if you get to a certain level of charge, if you go beyond, if you stay beyond that, you start to chalk up a fairly significant charge. I I mean, cost. Um, but it's a great message for the public, and I think it is a coming wave. So this is great. Anybody else have any comments? Mary Ann?
Karis, will we definitely, I am, I am in support of this, but I would like to see us uh, charging to the extent that it is used by the public. Um, I do think that that we're at the point where that makes sense. And um, so I hope that that's part of the plan for the systems that are getting installed.
Yeah. John?
Um, I agree uh, that I I think there should be a a system of charges for the use. Um, but I also, Mo, I agree with you that I do believe that, you know, at some point, we will be beyond the pandemic. Um, we may even be on whatever the new normal is, and we'll be back to having certain times in and around the town where parking is going to be challenging. And that uh, getting ahead of 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 potential issues, which is um, people will park in a charging station parking spot if they have no other option. It's amazing to me that people park in handicap spaces, um, you know, when there's no other option. I don't get it, don't understand it, um, don't support it. But I do support tickets for that, as I would for this. If you park in a, in a, you know, in a charging spot, and you're not a car, an electric vehicle charging, then there should be some sort of a fine. And I know that will be something that we will deal with. I think the big issue with respect to electric vehicles, um, you know, I think about it and and, you know, maybe in in the next replacement of vehicles. But I still am concerned about the range. I'm concerned about the charging availability. So I think that, yeah, is twenty thirty-five reasonable? Well, I hope that there are enough charging stations that uh, similar to gas stations, and that they, the charging can be quick, like, you know, fifteen minutes. Because I don't want to stop at a gas station or a charging station, and I want to be on my way. And I think, Dan, you're laughing, but I gotta tell you, I mean, unless they're gonna make these gas stations, yes, many of them have a lot of amenity, you know, they have food amenity.
They have very good restaurants, John.
Oh, okay.
To appeal to you.
Excellent. Dan, I like it. But uh, no, I'm I'm very much supportive of this. Thank you.
Well, John, the reality is that the charging capacity, the range on these cars is now in the four hundred to five hundred mile range on some of them. And the charging times are pretty quick on those highway chargers, and that's coming.
Okay.
So twenty thirty-five ma- may seem ambitious, but I I I think it's realistic.
Okay.
Well, go ahead, Jack. A couple of things, just questions. As far as PSAB is concerned, first of all, I agree with the idea of having a time limit in the space, or as Mr. Handel was saying, something where you have an accelerated cost after a certain time, because to take advantage of that, I think is unacceptable. But just a couple of questions. On PSAB, would the new uh, for the town employees, for the building department vehicles, would that be a new dedicated space? Because I know right now it's extremely tight in that lot. So I'd be supportive if we can find an area maybe behind where the gas pumps are or something in that area to have it, and that way it wouldn't impact the current law. Is that what the plan is, or have we not thought of that yet? Doesn't come to that level of design yet?
So we're still investigating options with the um, with the EverSource partner. Um, one of the areas that we did identify was um, along the um, the parking lot towards PSAB, but near the water sewer building that's there. Um, putting them there, and the idea would be to reallocate, we have reserved spots on the other side of the um, parking lot. And it would be to remove uh, two reserved parking spots from that side and move it to the other side. So there'd be no net decrease to um, public parking by virtue of us having um, these dedicated spots.
Okay, great. And then my second question is on the public lots, as far as the data on these current, you know, charging stations. So what I'm, my concern is using up existing parking, because I know you said you're gonna lose, maybe lose a space with ADA, but then you also lose that space because of an electrical charging, right? So you're actually losing two spaces potentially in a lot. And I would just like to see data of use right now that doing that is worth it, that it's gonna actually be used, because I've been other communities pre-COVID, and you see four or five stations in a lot, and no one's there. So I know there is some demand. I just want to balance that demand with a loss of a space, because that's what we're gonna hear about, especially if they're not charging at a capacity that's worth it, or at a speed that's worth it, or they're just vacant, people keep driving by. So it's that balancing effect. I'd just like to see, get an idea of how often they're used. So, but thank you for bringing this to us.
Ideally, these would be so common that you would have one in every space, and it wouldn't matter. And I think, you know, this technology advances very fast. Look how fast everybody got cell phones. And then smartphones. I mean, hardly anybody here remembers when they weren't smartphones, but it's only been since two thousand and seven.
Right.
So, these things move fast.
Yeah, and I think eventually we'll get there. I just want to see, I want to make sure we get there enough.
No, that's No, that's a legitimate concern because it consumes a space if nobody can park in it.
Right.
Yeah. Dan?
Yeah, I just, I want to, I want to commend you for taking this on. And yeah, it's, it's all new stuff. I'm joking with, with John about go out and have supper and charge your car. But I'm sure there's going to be a lot of changes and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of glitches and problems and things that we had to get over. But the sooner that we get into this and get a little immersed and find out what works and how to make things better. I think this is, this is a path to, to a lot of improvement. And so thank you for doing this.
This is great. Anything else on this issue? Thank you for coming in and thank you for taking care of us in the snow, Karis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the town meeting portion of our agenda. And the first item is to close the town meeting warrant. Kate, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would note if you end up with a system where you have an electric charger in every space, perhaps we could right now patent having turning it also into a parking meter so that we can collect some revenue kind of both ways. So I think you should.
Yeah.
On that, Mr. Chair.
Perfect.
So the board opened the special, the town meeting warrant. This is actually the annual town meeting warrant. That's typo on my part. In January, and we'd asked that the board close the annual town meeting warrant. The changes that we've made since you originally looked at it is that we, we are proposing that there's a potential for parcel acquisition, which we'll have more conversation about, Mr. Chair, in the future. And there's language in there for that. And then there's also language, which Mr. Riley and Ms. Cooley will talk about in terms of potentially asking town meeting to adopt the, the Noiri vision for race equity in Needham. So those have been added. I would say we've been in a conversation with the moderator about potential ways to hold town meeting. Holding it in Powers Hall the first Monday, Wednesday, Monday of May is not a scenario that we're proposing at this point. We hope to have for you a proposal at your next meeting about how we might consider currently considering an outdoor town meeting with more days associated with it, potentially on a weekend and, and splitting up the warrant in that direction. But there's a couple of items and ways to look at that. And we'll have a proposal for you at, at your next meeting. But until then, I would ask that the board vote to close the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a motion?
Chair, and I would move, I would move that the board vote to close the warrant for the 2021 annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions on anything that Kate has been telling us with respect to the warrant? We'll be taking up the Noiri vision statement later in the, in our agenda. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that closes the town meeting warrant. And that brings us to the town manager's report. Kate?
Just two things, Mr. Chair. I wanted to remind anybody that you know, or anybody who's watching or knows people that our emergency rental assistance program is still open. And if anybody has lost income due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are still accepting applications. There's information on the town website. People can call the housing office in the planning department or our office. There's plenty of ways that they can reach, reach us and get information about that program, but that is still available and we know there are people in need. I also would like to ask Katie just to update the board on some grants that business, businesses in our community have received recently. And this is something I, our economic development manager sent to us and I hadn't really understood the scope of it. So I thought you would be interested. So go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. And earlier this year, the state made $668 million available to small businesses who've been impacted financially due to the pandemic. And the state has that money going out through grants that the Massachusetts Growth Capital Corporation is administering. So they've been making announcement awards in waves, but I want to give you a summary of, I think there's been four, four waves announced so far, but to date, 47 Needham small businesses have been granted a total of $2,585,000 in total. And to give you a sense of recipients, it's 10 restaurants, 11 personal care businesses, five gyms, five retail stores, four medical offices, some early childhood education centers and construction and manufacturing companies. So it's really a wide swath of the local small business economy in Needham. And there's been a concerted effort, particularly in the grants for sector-specific eligibility for those small businesses that got hit hardest by the closures related to COVID. And I also thought it was noteworthy of, of that $2.6 million that are coming into our businesses in town. 45% of the funds are supporting women-owned businesses. 24% of the funds are supporting minority-owned businesses in Needham. And there were three veteran-owned businesses that are recipients. So it's really great work. This funding was part of the state's FY21 budget. So I want to thank our partners in the legislature. And we've heard directly from Rep. Garlic, even as recently as today, about helping get in touch with businesses and promote Needham applications. So as Kate mentioned, Amy Haleson, our economic development manager, has been working with small businesses in town to try to steer them to grant opportunities, this one and others. And so if there's any small businesses out there that want to be connected, we, please reach out. We have a department email address, economicdevelopment@needhamma.gov. And Amy will get back to you and provide whatever assistance that she can.
Thank you. That's great news. Thank you very much. Any questions for Katie? Anything else, Kate?
Nope, that's our agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that brings us to more discussion on the Noiri vision statement. I think those who saw that discussion last night have to be impressed with the depth and commitment to resolving this issue on the part of the Noiri members. And, and the quality of that discussion was inspiring, actually. So Mary Ann and Matt. Mary Ann, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Noiri met again last night. I'm not sure what number meeting it was. I think Lisa Smith-McQueeney said it was the seventh on, on vision and guiding principles. So it has been a lot of conversation actually by the Noiri group, a lot of really painstaking, thoughtful, dedicated work considering every word that is involved. And I appreciate our fellow board members in your, taking your time to listen to those careful conversations. As, as the chair noted, last night continued the tradition of, you know, candid and authentic and direct, but respectful conversation on the part of the committee with differing points of view and and I appreciate everybody who's on it for what they bring to the work. Noiri is ready to recommend a vision statement and some guiding principles to the board for adoption. I just want to talk a little bit about our process. We, we have a lot of, a great deal of consensus around the vision and the supporting bullet points there. And so you, we will take a look at those. And there are three guiding principles that the committee made a decision to bring forward this evening. We are considering still some other guiding principles as well as a set of intentional practices. But those are not yet ready to be brought forward to the board. So the decision was come forward with what is agreed on now and the committee will continue to have discussions while we're also undertaking the other work of the committee. You will recall that the very first part of the committee charge was to bring a vision and guiding principles forward for adoption by the select board. Just thinking for a moment about what the process is going forward. So we are asking you tonight for the select board to adopt this vision and these guiding principles that are coming forward. And further, we will ask for those to be sent to other boards and committees in Needham for their adoption and for them to consider how to integrate this vision and these principles in the work of their particular committees. I think it's important for us all, as you know, the select board has already considered, without even having this vision here, how our work has goals over the course of the next year related to race equity. So those are already part of our goals. I didn't actually bring those goals with me tonight, but they are available. And we are asking other boards and committees to also consider a portion of their work and how it can be considered through this lens so that we can meet our goal of making Needham a welcoming place for everybody where they feel like they belong and thrive in our community. I also want to say that thinking forward, there are a couple of things as we consider accountability. So we've already included it in the select board goals and we'll ask for it to be included in the goals of other committees. But I would like to suggest to the select board that we consider having a summit that could become an annual summit where we gather all the boards together to discuss the work and the progress that each board has made in contributing to making Needham a better place for everyone to live in. So that would be one suggestion that I have. And then the second suggestion would be that the select board, as Kate just mentioned, consider asking the town at town meeting to actually adopt and affirm this vision and these guiding principles as part of town meetings work. And I think what we heard from town meeting a year ago is that town meeting wants Needham to make progress around issues of racial equity. And this would be one step to be unified in our work together that sets some guidance in place for where we want to go. Matt, do you want to say anything? In addition to that, I haven't actually read the statement. So I will say to people, the statement is on the Noiri website. Kate, I believe we've, we've put it up on the Noiri website this afternoon.
It will be up soon.
It will be up soon. Okay. Matt?
Good. No, I want to, you know, it was a deep conversation and we're talking about difficult conversations and we've had them throughout, but I think it has been productive. And I think even to get to this place, I, you know, a month or two ago when we first started, I, we were thinking, how are we going to come up with this? There were so many kind of loose ends at the beginning. And with Lisa's help, we're able to form what we think is a vision statement that we can, we can use as a town and forward to other boards. And I think the idea of bringing it to town meeting is a, is a positive one. As you heard, and I don't know if we're going to go through the language, I did have some issue. And I did voice my concern with the use of, you know, white privilege and white culture, how that was used because to me, you know, divides, I think by race, we're looking at it. But that being said, I think in its entirety, it's something that we can all support. And I hope, as you said, when we move forward, the idea is to make Needham a better place for everybody. And that is our entire goal in this whole thing. And in order to get there, we're going to have more of these. We'll call them difficult conversations, but a way to get move forward. And that's what I'm looking for as the vision. So thank you for all your help in this. I to chair a committee like this with different opinions and difficult discussions is, is move it forward. Needs to be committed. So thank you.
And if I can just add, it's not just town government. So we are a world unto ourselves with our boards and even town meeting. But there's a much broader community out there. And we've got to promote, assuming we adopt this, that we have to promote that vision to the, the community at large and get more buy-in than just this, this world of active people who care about, enough about the town to be active in it. So.
I do hope that other organizations in town will also adopt it. So and, and perhaps we can think and consider a way that they can also participate in our summit. So I think that would be worthy to consider, figure out how to have a whole town summit focused on these particular goals that are driven by this. If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to read just the vision statement, maybe without all the bullets. I don't think people need to listen to me reading the document, but just the vision statement itself, I'm happy to read.
Of course.
So what we have recommended for adoption is that Needham will be a community free of racism, racial bias, prejudice, and discrimination. Our resident schools, businesses, organizations, and government will work together to identify barriers to racial equity and create solutions, opportunities, resources, and support for removing them. The committee really wanted an op, an optimistic, forward-thinking vision. And this is a community, describes a community they would like to live in.
Great. Now, some of us had the opportunity to watch the discussion. And this is an action item. Is everybody sufficiently familiar with this so that we could?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Set the board, that the select board vote to adopt the vision statement and guiding principles as recommended by the Noiri working group. And I have a comment after it's seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Of course. Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion's made and seconded, and John has the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I have been attending as a viewer, all of the Noiri meetings. And, you know, the past few, the past seven relative to crafting the vision statements of the guiding principles from, you know, sitting as somebody viewing this as, as a spectator, let's say. I see it's hard work. I see the struggle that members have with finding, you know, with explaining a word or a couple of words or a sentence. And I, I think it's been, yeah, I mean, for me, it's been eye-opening and, and I've enjoyed the process. And, you know, to get to a consensus, which you got to last night on this, you know, on, on what we're voting, about to vote on, I think is a tremendous, tremendous. You know, I applaud the committee and Mary Ann, you and Matt. You know, this is, this is hard work and, and it's not easy. And I will say, you know, I know that you are there. You are participating. For those of us watching, we recognize and appreciate the work that's going into this. So thank you.
Well said, John. Dan, do you have a?
I, I, as it said, I appreciate the work of Mary Ann, Matt, and all of the members of the committee. And as, as with others, I've watched the, the discussions, you know, this. One of the, the things about the guiding principles was we really asked Noiri to write these for us because for two reasons. One, it's an intense piece of work. And, and, and that would, going to be very challenging for us to really give the kind of attention that the committee was able to. Plus, the content of it, a lot of it comes from experiences that is just outside the experience of, of members, of most of the members of the committee. And so watch very carefully. These are the difficult conversations, as has been said, for neighbors to have, working on issues that require action. This is a rare and necessary moment for, for significant progress on race equity, particularly for black people, but particularly in this community, but everywhere in this country. And I've watched some of the discussions about the wording. But I'm, I'm really satisfied with the work that's been brought forward, forward to us. And, and I think, and one additional comment that I would ask, because I know there's always the question, well, is the amount for the Noiri members? Well, will, will this have the approval of the, the select board? I'm satisfied. I might, if I were writing this myself, I might change a word here or there. But this is sufficient for the purpose. It really represents a level of input that I personally, it would have been very difficult for me to, to keep up with what the committee. It would have been very difficult for me to to keep up with what the committee was doing, it's really intention thought out. And I wanted to add the comment that it was good of the committee to forward to us. The remaining materials, the the guiding principles that they, the additional principles that they still have under discussion, and the intense. Potential practices that they've drafted, and I just wanted to say, as part of this discussion and feedback for for you, Mary Ann and and Matt. On other members of the Nwari committee that may be watching, that I'm, that's good work too, so if those were to come forward in that form or substantially. That form uh soon, then I'm ready to vote on that. I had one question about sending the materials to the other committees, I think. I would like to wait till we have the full document here at once and send it all out, but I would leave that to others if they want to begin. I just think if we give, if we, if we. If we get it all together, all approved, and then we send it out with one cup cover letter from us, it might have a better impact. And it won't be long, I figure that you will be able, from what I've seen, be able to complete this at your next meeting, and. And we could act promptly after that, but I think, great work, and and thank you.
Well, I think you're optimistic that we might be able to complete it at the next meeting, and and I say that even recognizing that the committee has been. Incredibly generous with their time, because every meeting has run over significantly. Um, but, but yes, we would, we would all love it if that were to be the case, I'm not certain where. We would quite be ready to do that, I don't make any predictions.
And I would, I would, I'll, I'll leave the whole question of when we start circulating this out, I think my. Brothers would be to have it to get all at once if we had it ready to go at once. But uh others can make that decision, if the, if Nwari wants it to move forward, then I'd be happy with that too.
And to your point, Dan, to anybody watching this meeting or in attendance here. On the town website, at the bottom of the page, there is a little item that says YouTube. And if you click on that, you will can see not only the meetings of this board, the finance committee and the other committees. You can see the Nwari meetings, and. To those who have the time, they are very well worth watching, it's an education. Because there are perspectives expressed there that we don't normally hear, and it's been an education to watch it. Thank you for your work, Matt, and and Mary Ann, for chairing this effort.
Um, Mo, is it okay if I also read the name of the committee members, because I just want to read them, and I'm gonna say if. If uh residents see one of these folks, please say thank you to them as well for all their work. Um, and and I do think, you know, everybody on the committee. Um, has really been helpful, because it it's led to discussions where people have really had to think about. What their position was and what was really important to them, and um I appreciate those, those conversations, so. Um, Matt and I have participated from the select board, Suneki's from the school committee, Jen Howard from the Needham Human Rights Committee. Marcus Nelson from the Needham Human Rights Committee, Jay Spencer, the owner of French Press. Ramin Abashamiyan, who's a member of the Needham Clergy Association. Vivian Chu, who is a resident and on the personnel board, Natasha Espada, a resident and on the PPVC. Uh, Dr. Toyin Fiamy, who is a resident and pediatrician. And that's everybody, so should anybody see any of them, say thank you.
And don't, and please mention the facilitator who has done a.
I was gonna say, I'm remiss, actually, if I don't mention Lisa Smith McQueeney. And also Kate and Katie, who have also staffed and supported all the work of the committee, so. Um, but Lisa has been, um, I just think it was so fortuitous that we found her, she has been a tremendous help.
So the motion has been made and seconded, I don't think we took a vote.
Not yet.
So, let us take a vote. Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Nice work. Um, do we have any other business before this board this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved, that's it.
Moved and seconded, uh, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Matt?
Aye.
Uh, and the chair votes aye, and the ayes have it.
I didn't vote.
Go ahead, John.
Yes.
The ayes still have it.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.